Good evening. I call the May 18th, 2022 Apple Valley Planning Commission Meeting to order. Welcome, virtual viewers and our in-person audience. I would like to take this time to welcome Jeff Pruitt, our new board member, onto the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Thank you.
First item of business is the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, in front of you is an updated staff report for Item 5B, the retaining wall item. And there is an additional finding, finding number five, in the first paragraph of the staff report. And so I just wanted to draw attention to that. Kathy will walk you through that, in addition to her presentation on that item. And then, second, at Item 6B, there is a, I'd like to say that the title is a little bit longer than the one that went out in the agenda, and it's a development update for 2022, 2023, and a forecasting of staff transitions. So I will lead that discussion.
Thank you. Updated. Okay. Any changes from the commissioners? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
That is moved by Commissioner Deekman and seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion without discussion unless a commissioner or citizen requests to have any item separately considered. It will then be moved to the land use action items for consideration. 3A, approved minutes of May 4th, 2022. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Motion to approve.
That is moved by Commissioner Mahowald and seconded by Commissioner Sandell.
Scanlon.
And I sustain abstain. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Abstain.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is number four, public hearing, which there is none noted. That brings us to number five on the agenda, land use action items. And that is 5A, Lundson Byer Lease, and that is Thomas Lovelace.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. What you have before you tonight is a request for a replat of Outlot E of Orchard Place Second Edition into three lots, and then site plan building permit authorization to allow for 44,600 square foot grocery store on a just over six acre lot within that new plat. And the site is located in the southwest corner of 155th Street and Pilot Knob Road, and is zoned, or is comp plan guided for commercial and is zoned RB. The type of this request would be consistent with both the comprehensive plan and zoning for the property. This is just a look at the merchandising plan that HJ Development, who is the developer along with Rockport, in this 34 acre development overall site located in the southwest corner of Pilot Knob and 155th Street. And as you can see, we've looked at several of these projects, approved all of these projects in this location here, and this just kind of gives you an outline of what's been happening down there. If you've driven down there lately, been around there, all the buildings, with the exception of the one building located here, are currently under construction. And in fact, I think the last I heard that Texas Roadhouse was planning on opening sometime before the end of May. And I think that there even some of the other ones are open down there, like Coffee Shop and some other ones. So this is the Orchard Place Second Edition final plat. And again, the site that we're looking at is Outlot E, again, located in that corner there. What they're proposing to do is create three lots. The larger lot would be for the Lundson Byer Lease site with two smaller lots, which would be used for future development. Just one note on the preliminary plat that we requested that an additional drainage and utility easement be added along. In this general location, it'll show in a little bit more detail when we get to the storm sewer plan. They need an additional easement to cover a storm sewer plant, or storm sewer line, because that will be a public utility. This is the site plan, again, looking at it, the access to the site will be from two locations off of English Avenue, two direct locations into the site, and then one that would run along here and provide access to the site. So you really have three locations. There will be no access allowed off of Pilot Knob Street or 155th Street. Again, we're talking a little bit about the dining area, and just wanted to make sure and reinforce that we'd like to see some type of decorative fencing around the dining area to kind of provide that barricade for the area from the traffic as well as along in this corner here. Revised grading plan, looking at that, we went back, asked them to take a look and try to do something more substantial on the north side to help screen the area in the back, with the understanding that their truck receiving dock areas are located in this location, and then they do have some generators and trash compactor at this location. They do have walls that do screen that, but there'll still be some activity in the back that requires it to be screened, and what they've done is added a slight berm onto the property that is the Williams Pipeline property. That always becomes a challenge to do that, because Williams Pipeline is very prescriptive about what they can, or restrictive of what they can or cannot be put on their pipeline And then this is the utility plan. Again, utilities will be extended into the site. This is the area that I was talking about on the plat, preliminary plat, where a drainage and utility easement should be established at this location. Revised landscape plan, they did revise that and added additional plantings along the northern side of the property, again, to help soften the area in the back, which is the loading, or the receiving dock area. So they've added that in combination with the changes in the elevation back there. Building elevations remain the same. I think everyone, or else, we did hear several comments from the commissioners that they had no objection to the materials and exterior look of the building. This is just another look at the elevation. The east side. You can see this is where the dining area will be and a second mezzanine area. And this is the rear of the building, and these are the walls I was talking about that will help screen the activity, loading, unloading, and so forth, in the back on the north side. And then this is the west elevation, and you can see this canopy over this. This will be for pickup area that we're seeing a lot of in today's world for coming to pick up groceries and such. And this is just the floor plan showing the areas. And again, looking down here, this is the area for their cafe. I think they call it Creations Cafe. Caribou Coffee is located in here, and then the main activity of a normal grocery store. Recommended action tonight is we recommend the approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the conditions with one change to condition number eight. It was incorrectly, the street was incorrectly labeled. It should be 155th Street West, not 157th Street. So that would be condition number eight. And then we are recommending site plan building permit authorization for this grocery store with the submit, subject to the 13 conditions contained in the staff report. I will stand for any questions, and there are representatives from Lundson Byer Lease that can answer any questions that you may have regarding this project.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Scanlon?
Chair, Tom, just talking about the landscaping on the north side, and I know we're kind of pinched there because of the pipeline, as you mentioned. If there's, can be, I think it works out a little better if there can be, you know, it's pretty uniform, linear, the way they're showing it right now. Maybe an example, like Target across the street, where they kind of have it broke up into various sections, and that it, you know, there's, it's hard for me to tell what materials they're using here, but that it's broke up into for seasonal, so that it's not just one season getting covered as far as the screening goes, that it, there's kind of a mix there, both horizontally and vertically, possible.
Well, vertically will be a challenge because of the requirements that are allowed within the easement. I think they restrict it to only three feet. And so it'll be mostly shrubs, perennials, and such that would be located along that north edge. There may be someone here that can address that further if you'd like.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Tom.
Would you like the petitioner to answer your question?
If they had any comments on it. Sure. Please.
Unless you'd like us to answer any questions.
I guess just to answer Commissioner Scanlon's question?
Commissioner, and fellow commissioners, my name is Mitch Avery from Lundson Byer Lease, and also LB Apple Valley LLC, which is the applicant here. So as far as the Magellan Pipeline easement is concerned, it's a very tight agreement, and we've tried to extend it. So even birmingham is, you know, a substantial request, but even shrubs can be a maximum of three feet high, no root structure. You know, so it's very straightforward. We, we looked at, Tom challenged us to look at, you know, what they had done for Target years ago when they developed Target, and we went back there and they said, don't even think about that. How that ever got done, I think it was before, maybe it was Williams at that time, before Magellan, or whatever, but the new pipeline and then its new high pressure pipeline, obviously, that's in there, would not allow for any kind of plantings like that. So even birmingham or rocks or anything like that, they need to be able to access it from any point along the easement. So the road that we're putting, excuse me, the road that we're putting in, they have the ability to destroy it when they're going in there to do it, and we have to replace it. So it's, we can use it, but it needs to be, very little tampering to it. So we were trying to make it anything but a football field, you know, to add some kind of height, and Tom suggested maybe we could be birmingham, and so we'll do the most that we can do with it, obviously. And I like your idea about seasonal plantings versus just some things that look dead half the year. But unfortunately, we all love trees, and that's something that's just an absolute no.
Thank you. I appreciate your explanation.
No, absolutely, and we'll continue to work with Magellan.
It's a little dirty to it, so thanks.
Yeah, thank you. We'll try to work with the city of Magellan to try to do what we can there, for sure.
Excellent.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions? Okay.
Madam Chair, I just have one question. Would you mind coming back up? I just happened to notice on the, I think it's called the conceptual fixture plan, that it talks, there's a label of beer and wine sales?
Yes.
And the, we are a municipal liquor store city.
Okay, so this is on sale? This would just be for a glass of wine or a glass of beer with your meal in the store, in the Creation Cafe area?
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying. I just want to make sure we're all understanding.
We would never want to compete with the city of Apple Valley.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
Madam Chair, I move we recommend approval of the LB Apple Valley preliminary plat, subject to the nine conditions contained in the May 18th, 2022 staff report, and an amendment to the condition number eight, changing the street number from 157th Street West to 155th Street West.
Second.
That was moved by Commissioner Deekman and seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move we recommend site plan building permit authorization to allow for a construction of a 44,600 square foot grocery store on a 6.07 acre lot, in accordance with the submitted plans dated April 28th, 2022, subject to the 13 conditions contained in the May 18th, 2022 staff report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Deekman and seconded by Commissioner Scanlon. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to land use action items, number 5B, in Gazi retaining wall. Kathy Bodnar.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The petitioner of the variance request are Rosario and Anthony Gozen, I'm sorry, Gozy. Is that it? Gozy.
We all pronounced it wrong.
Yeah, we're all wrong. The Gozys own the property at 13488 Georgia Court. The rear of the lot butts up to Greenleaf Elementary School. The school property has a significant hill that slopes down toward the subject property. So the owners are requesting a variance from the five foot rear yard setback for retaining walls in order to fix a failing retaining wall system. The property is owned, are three, single-family residential, minimum lot size 11,000 square feet. Typically, the building setback in this zoning district would be 30 feet, but in the zoning code 1553334A says that retaining walls, landscape structures such as retaining walls, may be within the rear yard, provided they're no closer than five feet from the rear property line. The reason for the variance this evening is that the petitioners are asking to be able to go closer to the property line. So one of the, an important characteristic of the site is the hill, as I mentioned, sloping from Greenleaf Elementary down into the backyard of the property. In fact, to give you a sense of the topographic challenges, it's about 26 feet from the corner of this lot to the elevation where the pool is located. So that's a pretty steep, steep hill. And then the area that they are dealing with is about 14 feet tall, about a 14 foot change in elevation. In 2020, the owner started the wall replacement project by removing the existing modular block wall system in the rear yard. They had not obtained a building permit, so the building official went out and ordered a stop work order and shut down the project. Both a building permit and a natural resources management permit were required before the project could proceed. The Minnesota State Building Code states that retaining walls of this size must be designed by a licensed engineer. So the plans are required to be designed for the site and specifically denote the wall system, the wall components, wall placement, backfill material, geo grid, and drainage systems. Some earlier engineered plans were provided, but they were quite vague, and the building official said, no, we really need you to go back and look at the specific blocks, the drainage, the geo grid. And those plans then were submitted to the city, May 9th, I think. I've got a date later. Another consideration, just for the planning commission's information, and just so there's no question, there is a fence that swings from the property out onto the school district property. This is an existing fence, the property owners pointed out, but last year they went through the process of obtaining an easement from the school district for that fence. So the fence is a chain link fence, and so they're moving forward with that. So here's the site plan. The wall plan shows three lines of walls. The wall system is set up to be a V interlock block wall system. The blocks are two feet by two feet by six feet long, 3,600 pounds each. The, how the wall is set up is two blocks are placed on top of each other to create a four foot tall wall section. So what is shown then is three, three wall tiers. So the bottom section would be four feet, second section would be eight feet, and then up to 12 feet. And again, the walls then are stepped back, so they're not connected, but they're integrated. So the wall sections are denoted in the plans, lower tier, upper tier, and property line. Lower tier is the long wall, that's 96 lineal feet, and then the two upper tiers are about 60 lineal feet. So the variance requested would be the sections of wall that are within five feet of the property line, so it includes retaining wall and the stair section. And again, the case is the petitioners are replacing an existing wall system, so making My apologies, my, there we go. So the three tiers of walls, the lower tier, it's difficult to see on this drawing, but it's the two stacked blocks to create the four foot tall wall. Lower tier, upper tier is that second tier, and then property line wall would be the one along the north side of the site. Geo grid placement was designed by the engineer, so that was necessary. I'm showing specifically where that was needed. Wall sections are shown, and one of the wall sections has a built-in bench. For the planning commission's information, there are photos provided. The old wall was a modular block system, again, a failing, a failing system. And then these are photos of the new, the new blocks, keeping in mind that the work is not finished.
Let me interrupt you for a second.
Yes. I am sorry. Do we want to deliver it?
Well, I don't, we've got a water problem.
Okay. All right. Sorry.
Drops.
Sorry about that. No. All right. So we're just winding up the old walls, again, the modular block. The new wall system, again, not complete, so they don't have the caps yet, so, but you get a sense of those large blocks and what they're intending to do there. And again, the old walls with the new walls. So when the city reviews a request for a variance, it determines whether or not there is a practical difficulty related to the property. The definition of a practical difficulty, according to the code, is that the applicant proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner. The plight of the applicant is due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the applicant. Variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality, and economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulties. In addition to that definition, then, the city evaluates factors. Special conditions apply to the structure or land in question that are particular to the property. The granting of the variance will not be contrary to the intent of the chapter. Conditions, again, do not result from the actions of the applicant owner. Granting of the variance will not merely serve as a convenience to the applicant, but is necessary to alleviate practical difficulties, and the variance requested is the minimum variance necessary to alleviate the practical difficulty. So with that, Madam Chair, staff is recommending approval of the variance with findings and conditions to follow. So the recommended action we are bringing forward is a recommendation to approve the variance to allow the retaining walls to be constructed less than five feet from the rear property line at 13488 Georgia Court, based on the findings listed below and subject to the conditions listed below. As Mr. Nordquist pointed out, the findings that you received, there is an update. We are adding finding number five, which is kind of the factor test from the variance. So the four are the ones that are in the staff report, the number five, the owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the zoning provisions of the code, need for the setback variance is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the owner, and the setback variance would not alter the essential character of the locality. No changes then to the conditions recommended. So with that, Madam Chair, I could stand for questions if there are any.
I have a quick question, Kathy.
Sure.
The previous wall, was the previous wall just in the wrong spot then?
Because permits weren't issued for that, I don't know. Thank you. Okay. 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 Thank you. Okay.[957.56]
plan for this and submit that to the city to show where everything lies?
Madam Chair, normally, no, the city doesn't require that, go to that extent. Because of the fact that the plans are engineered and the plans have been reviewed, one of the conditions is they have to have a special inspector on site verifying the materials and the placement and all of that. Staff is less concerned. It's, there may need to be a little bit of flexibility so that they can get everything stabilized. That's really the critical piece, in that it's constructed correctly. And the walls may move a little bit, and that's why it's kind of a blanket variance requested.
Well, I guess my thought about having an as-built plan is then you could make notation where the property line is with association to the wall. Therefore, that'll be on file with the city, and then that would be something that a respective homeowner could take note of versus us not being able to, in a position to file anything.
Well, that's a good idea.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Please.
The engineering plans and the site plans are in the building inspection department with the building permit, and those records are retained. So it will be on record, and most title companies, when they do title searches, will look at
I think another important point is that the wall's been sitting kind of unstable for a couple of years. And so we've been working together to work this out, and sometimes you get started on the wrong foot, and it takes a while to iron things out. So I think our objective is to do what needs to be done to get this darn thing stabilized and fixed, so.
Do I have a recommendation?
Madam Chair, I move we recommend approval of the variance to allow retaining wall to be constructed less than five feet from the rear property line at 13488 Georgia Court, based on the findings listed below, subject to the condisc, and subject to the conditions listed below. The findings one through five, conditions one through five, as stated in the staff report dated May 9th. Oh, no, May 18th.
Second. It was moved by Commissioner Deekman and seconded by Commissioner Sandow. Any discussions? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Kathy. Okay, that brings us to number six, other business. Bruce Nordquist.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, just a reminder, your next regular meeting is June 1st of 2022 at 7:00 p.m. And I just wanted to point out, and also for the interested public that may be following along, that the city council decided to schedule a special planning commission, excuse me, city council meeting for June 16th. And so that meeting will be the only city council meeting in June, and they acted on that last Thursday, May 12th. And so that's, I just wanted to point that out. They do have a meeting scheduled for May 26th, and that is proceeding also, but I'm really trying to draw attention to June 16th as being the sole planning, city council meeting in June. With that, I will come up for the presentation. Also on May 12th, I had an opportunity to provide a pretty comprehensive discussion of what projects are coming up in 2022, 2023. And so I am going to go through that very quickly, things that you're all familiar with for the most part, but also to try to identify what's, what we're anticipating coming in as application in 2022 or early in 2023 for perhaps a construction start in 2023. And so we'll just quickly go through these items. Right now, you're familiar with the retail commercial site plan, known as Orchard Place, down to the lower right. But the city is also competing and with agreements from the property owner to secure site selector interest in a 600,000 square foot building for the northeast corner of the active mining area. And I would say that that's equivalent to all the buildings that Upennor has built and where they do their manufacturing. Upennor is a clean manufacturer. This would be another example of a clean manufacturer that we would hope would take a look at this location. In addition, and I'll touch on this more in just a couple of minutes, we're awaiting the applicant to submit on a medical clinic construction in two locations that are identified here. You're familiar with the, Mr. Lovelace used a example of this exhibit. And I think what we're really referring to is Lundson Byerly's, Crisp and Green, Chipotle, Newt's, Starbucks, Red Nails, Sport Clips, Sweet Treasures. You know, the owner's been ill, and they opened, but then I don't know how that's going to move forward. And I keep him on this slide because she worked so hard to get to this location in Apple Valley. She has a home in the Cobblestone neighborhood. This was something she's worked on to achieve over about a five-year period. So we wish her well. And then Punch Pizza. I have been working on getting Punch Pizza in the town for over five years, and I, finally, they said yes and found a place. So the two medical clinics, when you add it up, you know, 30 and 23, about 53,000 square feet, 42, and I think it's a 23, there's a lot of possible medical clinic square footage, a real hub that we're looking at here, and so we're excited. This is just the concept plan at the moment until they submit an application. We've talked about, held a public hearing about Scannell and it expanding to 16 acres rather than just the eight acres. And that, we'll be coming back with that and wrapping that up. Kathy is the project manager on that one, and that'll be when they're ready to move forward, when Kathy is ready to move it forward. We're still working on some of the details. For instance, traffic management, we need to understand the demand at this location for truck traffic, for warehouse distribution type of building. The, just did the sketch plan for floor and decor, and it's a, so we just want to keep that moving forward. We haven't received an application yet, but we think it's a good commercial use and a commercial location. The Lund Byerly's that you just approved, the Opus Office Flex Warehouse for multi-tenant warehouse type of uses. And the reason why this is so critical is it's kind of a two-step. You get Opus underway, and Abdallah then, because they're selling this eight-plus acre parcel, can proceed to expand with the type of additional candy manufacturing that they hope to do at this location. You might recall Galaxy Market and Restaurant near Kelly Park, they're, I think they've got their plans in and under review, so it's something that they would like to see started this year. And Paul's Market, we haven't had a chance to talk about that, and again, this is just a concept, but the Brown Square Building here is going to be a reclaimed barn location as their commercial retail center, and it's going to have a mezzanine level in the barn that would be their office operations center, which hasn't really been a clear location for them with the existing buildings that, they've been around a really long time. So we're excited to see that when it comes forward. And then there are two locations that are, two slides here that talk about stuff that you approved a year ago that's under construction or almost done. Orchard Path, the final wing to the Orchard Path Presbyterian Homes, senior independent living kind of location. I think it's about 60 units. Orchard Place Phase One is well underway, and that's, I believe, 48 to 50 townhomes with another, with Phase Two planned. My Slone Suites was a small commercial building just north of the Tavern Grill for personal services. Chase Bank is getting finished up in front of Experience Fitness. Summers Ridge Assisted Living should be pretty close to getting completed this spring, and this was a picture from earlier in April. And then the Riser Senior Apartments, Long Founders. Then, last year, you approved several locations. It's Lakeside at Farquhar Lake, the five single-family homes. It's Orchard Place Phase Two. It's Eagle Point Villas, the start of the change of the golf course. And then it's Apple Point Senior Cooperative. Do you need another, another drop? Do you have another drop? We're full service here.
I tell ya. Do I have my...
I'll get it.
Okay. I'm going to keep rolling, and Sharon will deliver.
Thank you.
And one of the features of the 2040 comp plan is it's all driven by a focus on 12 keys to a vision to the city. And over time, you know, the last 10 years was all about sustainability. This 10 years, it's all about service, and we are a service organization. And it doesn't mean that sustainability isn't important, but many things in the community are important, being business-oriented, having parks to experience, being a great place to live, safe community, healthy and active, accessible. And the whole focus is being a community for a lifetime. And I decided to point all this out was I wanted Mr. Pruitt, Commissioner Pruitt, to get a good introduction to all of the work that the planning commission has been reviewing and the direction that we're going. And everything is framed by our vision and by the 2040 comp plan. You know, every year, the city council has a goal setting, and they had that goal setting earlier this year at April 1. And they affirmed a series of things that were presented by Tom Lowell to the city council in May, which some of the primary goals of the city maintain financial stability and our two AAA bond ratings, implement an annual neighborhood street reconstruction project. We've got new phases to maintain stable and predictable property taxes and fees. And then the goals go on, but I did want to draw attention to one because it's been, it was important to the council a year ago, and it remains important, and so it was restated. And so I just want the planning commission to understand this particular goal. Preserve commercial, industrial, zoned, guided land for its intended use, not for housing. And what you might not have understood when we were going through the 24, the comprehensive plan update, is the Met Council saw the active mining area, and they go, wow, can we do a bunch of housing there? Well, no, we've been trying to grow jobs in the community for several years. The active mining area is meant to be a mixed business campus, and we're on that track. We've been on that track since about 2007, and we're staying on that track. But I really wanted to draw attention to it because staff leading with work with applicants is, you know, not going to support an applicant that wants to convert commercial into multifamily, wants to, and that would be probably the example, that the city council isn't prepared to review at this time. So that's the direction to staff, and now it's a shared direction to the council. In addition to that, there's staff transitions. You know, we've got, I think Tom and Kathy have been here 27 years, and so organizationally, they're sound, they're strong. You see them every time we have a planning commission meeting. Well, that's not what I wanted to talk about. I wanted to talk about that we must be willing to let go of the life we have planned so as to have the life that is waiting for us. And so at the end of the summer, at the end of August, I will retire. And I, the council knew this April 1st, and of course, I, you would know, there's a little bit of theater in me, and I would do it on April 1st as, and it would appear like an April Fools' joke, and it wasn't. And I have not shared it with many, but Tom Lowell has asked me to make sure that the planning commission knows the direction that we're going and that there will be another director to be identified. So I, this happens to the center photo, I happen to wake up to this every morning, the tropical flowers, not quite in season yet, particularly if we're going to have 50 degree over the weekend, but we're close, and those kind of flowers return because I always grow tropicals during the summer on my deck. Yes, that is me kayaking out on the St. Croix. And yes, Katie and I acquired a Boston Whaler last fall, and this was the test drive when we took it out on the St. Croix. And it's, it's in the water, it's ready to go. We'd like the water to recede a little bit. It's an active, active environment. And I can always return to my barn-stable rocker and just read a book along the shore.
I thought it was to rock the babies or their grandkids.
So just want everybody to know. And that's it. The chair, the chair hung in there tonight to the, right to the, to the last, you could say, it's the last drop. Let no opportunity pass. And thank you, your wonderful planning commission, and I really, this has been a capstone to my crew, so.
Well, how do I even say anything after that, but...
You could ask me a question.
You know, my heart is heavy, but I'm happy for you, like I told you before. I'm happy for you. You deserve it. But whoever takes your position is going to have big shoes to fill.
Well, that's what they said with Rick Kelly, and I never quite achieved that, but I, we, it's a pretty unique group that gets to work for the city.
Yes, well...
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. You've done a great job.
Appreciate it. And I'm not going anywhere in the meantime, so you really have to tolerate me.
Let's enjoy the next few months.
Things don't change much, but I, I will let you take the final action, which on the planning, which on the planning commission agenda is adjournment.
Okay. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Scanlon and seconded by Commissioner Deekman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gavel, this meeting is adjourned.